So, welcome to the Sullivan School Committee meeting for Sullivan Elementary School, May fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Start with, uh, review and approve minutes.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
Remove the provision.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Um, so financial statements and warrants, um, you don't have Patty here to...
Patty's at a conference tonight, but there are eight warrants, this month totaling seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three and eighty-four cents. Seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
I can do that, too.
Go ahead, thank you.
So, if there's, I, my suggestion would be if there's something folks want to discuss, you know, we could still do that. Um, if there, obviously, if there are questions, we could, um, yeah.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I did bring some paperwork that I would like to read really quickly with you for your information, your awareness, of these, that, these items that impact not only the budget, but the well-being of the school facility. So, the first thing that we are talking about, and I'm not sure how much of you know, is the sewer eject- sewage ejection pumps. This is a narrative that was written by Bob Lesko, and I have an update on it, on the exact cost. Okay, so the Sullivan School has two ejector pumps located outside the school in a large sump pit. Six feet diameter by twelve inches, oh, six inches di- no, six feet by twelve feet deep. These pumps grind and pump sewage from the school and deliver it to the town sewer distribution system. These are heavy-duty, one-half horsepower, three-phase, two-hundred-volt, sub-submersible, submersible grinder pumps. Starting at around May third, the school began experiencing alarms in a panel that monitors these pumps in the tank. To date, we have opened the pit, it cost one hundred eighty dollars, pumped it and cleaned it, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars to do that, and completed an initial survey of the equipment. We have established that the rail system installed to lift the pumps out of the pit was fabricated from galvanized pipe, a material that does not hold up well in this type of service. The rails have deteriorated from corrosive gases in the waste system to a point where they have fallen apart, leaving no way to raise the pumps for service. At a minimum, this rail system needs to be replaced with stainless steel, uh, and stainless steel should be utilized. At the same time, the system of floats that alternates and controls the pumps should be replaced. These floats were the source of our recent alarms. Finally, these ejector pumps are approximately thirty years old, and consideration should be given to replacing at least one of them. If we replace one of the two pumps, the old pumps should be rebuilt and stored in the school as a spare. We are working with a vendor, Simon Be Hello, that we have used to maintain similar ejection pumps at Conway and Deerfield Schools. He specializes in the maintenance of ejector pumps and has previously worked on these pumps. I'm expecting budget pricing on this work and currently estimate the cost of these repairs will total somewhere between six thousand and eight thousand dollars. This statement is breaking news, I just got it. I had just received a formal proposal for the above work. It includes rebuilding the rail system using stainless steel, replacing the float switches, and installing one new pump for six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. This combined with what we have already spent, one hundred and eighty to open the pit and three hundred and fifty to clean the pit, should complete this work. The last paragraph on this first page explains, in our heating oil line, appears on page five with a financial report, there's an encumbrance there of nine thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents, which Patty doesn't think we will need. To the best of her knowledge, all oil for the year has been delivered and paid for, so that money will be available for the repair work. So, we're looking at taking six hundred, six thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars, thirty-six cents from the nine thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars, fourteen cents left over in the oil line to pay for these sewage ejection pumps. So, I'm not sure if we need a vote on it, but it is something that must be done. It's critical to do this work, and the sooner the better, and the money is there to support it. So, um, then we move on to a less critical piece, but something you need to know about, and finally, the last piece, which we should just put on the table for all of your information. The next piece, um, is related to the ten thousand gallon underground oil tank and oil delivery to bo- uh, boilers. This is listed in priority, order priority. So, these are the things that we need to be thinking about. Replace defective obsolete oil tank monitor that tells us about levels and leaks with refurbished unit for fifteen hundred dollars. The devices and sensors no longer are no longer manufactured, so they're manufactured, so there is some risk involved in buying a refurbished one. However, if you look closer, replacement of the entire oil tank monitoring system is nine thousand, five hundred. So, this will be something for later discussion, particularly before the winter comes. But, the question lends itself, do we want to spend fifteen hundred dollars and use a refurbished, remanufactured one? Or the nine thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, to replace the whole oil tank monitoring system?
This is monitoring for...
How much oil is in there and is it leaking? The problem is, is we, oh, I think we ran out of oil one time or two, let me continue. With the exception of the first item, refurbished tank monitor, none of the above projects are critical to the school's operation. They are all very important and carry some amount of risk if not completed. The school utilizes fuel oil for heating that is stored in an underground ten thousand gallon tank. The existing tank monitor is not functioning, forcing us to stiffen the tank to monitor oil level, and we no longer have a functioning leak monitor. We came very close to running out of oil twice last winter, and the failure of the device was a continuing factor, contributing factor. These, the existing monitoring system is no longer manufactured. We can purchase a refurbished control, but the vendor cannot agree, cannot guarantee that all of the existing sensors are working. We believe that purchasing the refurbished unit has the potential to gain us a few years to budget replacement of the entire system at nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The other work related to spill containment, oil lines, et cetera, are all prudent expenditures that relate to the large volume of oil stored underground and the delivery of oil to the whole school. So, other items that they're talking about is replacement of the oil spill containment at the delivery location, uh, repipe the corroded oil lines in the mechanical room, and replacement of the entire oil tank monitoring system, insta- instant, installation of two monitoring wells, piping of oil line from sump tank to the oil tank, excavation of the work of the dirt above the tank, and a new thirty-two by seven concrete pad for nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars.
This is to make this all, I'm assuming, more accessible rather than having it be buried underground?
The critical piece here is, there's only one critical piece, and that's the oil tank monitor.
Right, yeah. Well, I'd assume more urgent, I'm aware of.
Yes, but for long-term in the five-year plan, we have been, um, talking more seriously about this, particularly with Peter online asking, you know, coming on board, asking a lot more information. So, Bob Lesko felt it was prudent to really let you know some of the big issues that we experienced this year.
Yep.
So, um, and then on the last page, again, in order of decreasing priority, but the, uh, boiler tempering pump to prevent thermal shock to boilers. So, what's happening is, this is a huge building, and they heat it, and my understanding is the, it's hot water that goes through the whole building, but because it's such a large building, when the water comes back to the boiler, it's cold, and the cold hitting the hot furnace causes thermal shock, and that's where we're getting those little pin, pinholes that are incredible leaks, they're so tiny, but the pressure behind them has the water come out. So, this project, three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for two boilers for tempering pumps is related to the issues we have had in the school with the cracked boiler sections. We have had at least two incidences where the boiler sections have had to be replaced due to leaks caused by cracks in the boiler sections. It is likely that these cracks were caused, or at least worsened, by thermal shock to the boilers. Adding this component to at least one of the two boilers is recommended. If at some point, one of the two boilers is replaced by a high-efficiency modular boiler, as proposed, which is seventy-five thousand dollars. These boilers would not require this modification. So, we have, um, a situation where we have priorities to the, the real, you know, fit, the real facility of the school, not just walls and rugs and, you know, but the real infrastructure of the school. And the, if, the sewage ejector pumps must be done, that's critical. It looks like we have the money for that, but the other two are for your, I guess, your discussion and your information. I think then you probably can have a better idea of the, um, the oil tank monitor that is quite necessary. It's not critical, but it's, uh, I would choose like the, a level just below critical. Running out of oil, when the kid, if they come to school and we find out the school's like sixty degrees, and we have children in classrooms, and, um, and certainly not being able to, you know, look for leaks or be aware of leaks. So, the question there is, do we want to spend one thousand, five hundred on a refurbished monitor that may or may not work? It can't be guaranteed.
So, we've got, so, just do the math here a little bit, so we've got the ninety-one sixty-six.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's any, you know, if there's anywhere else we're at, we're, you know, that's to the good. I don't know if there's anywhere else already that's going to be offsetting that to the bad, but assuming, assuming not for the moment. We'll be looking at ninety-one sixty-six minus the quite urgent, uh...
Six to eight thousand.
Six to eight, right, right.
Yeah, so it's sixty-six hundred, so...
But also, we already pigged the one eighty and the three fifty.
Correct, seventy-one hundred to seventy-two hundred.
Seven-one fifty-six, alright. Two thousand and ten dollars left over.
Alright. So, I mean, I, you know, the, honestly, of the, the next two things, the, um, because we've already experienced what happens with those, how much water can come out of those little tiny cracks and the damage it can do, I mean, I... I mean, on the one hand, I feel like, hopefully, it's not in the too distant future that we move to a more efficient boiler, but in the meantime, mitigating that risk. I mean, the, the oil tank thing, I mean, that, you know, it's not the best solution, but to continue to monitor it, to do the manual for the moment and...
Right, and with it being an automatic delivery.
Correct, I think that's a great...
That's, that's important to be supported.
So that we don't... I, I learned that lesson after getting yelled at a couple of times by the rest of my family.
Oh, likewise, yeah.
So, yeah, but oil might go down, want to be able to make sure I'm getting it at the right moment. Oh, we don't have hot water, sorry about that. Anyway, uh, I didn't miss, um, so... I, I mean, I, my, my inclination would be to do, to, to now, to, to do the first and punt till June, and maybe get a little more on the final picture, if, if this seems reasonable, then, you know, there's other reasons not to punt for a month. But, to, to June on the rest, see what, what a real, like, what it looks like, what else might, either we have more room to shift or not. And by the way, I mean, we don't, we don't do a line out of budget, so, I don't know, technically, I don't know that we have to focus. I think it's good practice that we do, regardless, um, so...
We're looking for guidance from the school committee, and we also want the school committee, especially when they're with the town, we're doing capital, uh, meetings, to understand that these issues are important.
I mean, sure, the oil stuff is what it is, or it's on the, uh, the sewage.
Right, right.
But for, for the boiler and the oil, there's a little bit of, uh, well, if you wanted to throw in big money now, you could save the cost of the Band-Aid.
Right.
But if you, you know, if you want to buy the Band-Aid, you buy yourself some time.
Right, right, in both cases, especially, I mean, I think, um, yeah, and I, and again, I, if we could come up with the thirty-six fifty to do one of the two boilers, um... And then, and presumably, so then that's the boiler that's being used, the other one's a backup, right? And then, so then we, there are some risks of, of more flooding, you know, or another round of flooding.
Right, and the cracked section of the boiler would cost more than running out of oil.
Yeah.
Right? Is that, is that what happened?
It's amazing, yeah, the system was built, but...
Yeah.
Cracks, but, oh, not being said.
Why, why do we have, how old is the sewage, sewage ejector system, is that?
It was when the school was built.
Yeah, it sounds like it, right? It's been thirty...
They would build...
What about that? First question would be, why did we have a system that used galvanized pipe, and it does not hold up?
Yeah.
I mean, that was an over, and why, where did that decision come from?
We can't do anything about that now, so...
Right.
There was somewhere else, I believe it was in Poway, where the, uh, the pump lining needed to be replaced, and something about... Or in Whaley, I can't remember, but it goes, the steel in the eighties was kind of overseas or something. It wasn't that, the same high quality, and it is starting to show, uh, out in places. But galvanized, I don't know, because clearly it was corroded, and if they can't even lift it out to do the work. If they lift it out now, you'd want to replace those rails so it can be easier to lift out to do that work.
And that has to be done because the alarm's going off, or is this...
It sounds like the alarm going off is a symptom of oil flow.
Right, it's somewhat stable now, they were here working on it last week, um, but I'm actually not sure if the alarm is still...
I mean, if you, if you pump it out to get rid of it as opposed to the normal flow, it...
Yeah, you can have a defective system, but just because you pump it out, you don't have a problem until it builds back up again.
Um, my thoughts are that I guess we have to go ahead with the sewage ejector problem, number one. Number two, um, I, my concerns about, uh, any immediate action with either the oil tank or the boilers are both, uh, that I don't know at this point what the status of our budget is for the remainder of this year. And not knowing that, it becomes hard to know whether this, where this ranks as a problem or a priority, uh, because we don't know what, to what extent we might or might not have problems in the overall budget. Uh, so that, uh, and with Patty, you know, very legitimately not here because she's got, you know, she's doing professional development stuff, which is what she should be doing, um, I don't feel like we have anything like the information to, at this point, move forward on either one of those. Um, my sense of the oil tank problem is that, well, like, we used to have an underground oil tank, and we had a big long stick, and we stuck it down there every so often, but we also kept good records about how much we used, and if you, you know, we were basically only filling it up once, every summer, but that was the idea, as long as we didn't run out. But, my understanding was that you didn't have this under automatic delivery, um, and I guess the question is, you know, the oil company likes to come and deliver as much as possible at one time, it's more efficient to them, but we could certainly get them on a program of coming to deliver it when basically the thing is no, no less than a third full or something like that, so there's no risk that we're going to run out.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, not be paying more for the refurbish. You know, we've got a contract for oil delivery, and, um, if they have to make an extra trip to make sure we're never running short, well, I think that shouldn't be a problem, um...
I find my, I mean, you know, this, not at school, but, you know, just for the home, you know, the, the, you know, the, the, um, service that we use are pretty good about, you know, about it. They tend to deliver when it's in that, like, you know, quarter to eight range very reliably. They, they, they have a big sense of our history and like what the weather's been, I don't know.
My concern about spending the, getting the refurbished unit is that, you know, what it really adds is the leak monitoring, too, but it's not even clear from here that the sensors are working enough, if that would be...
Yeah.
Actually providing the information if there was a problem. So, I'm a little bit, I'm certainly leery to go ahead and do that until we have a real understanding of what the, uh, the year's financial picture looks like, and I don't see any reason that, um, we can't put that one off until next meeting, certainly.
Both of yous.
And then the third one, and actually the second one, too, I, you know, I would, worth getting Mr. Lesko over here to, you know, make sure we're understanding, you know, what they, what the, what the concerns are, what the risks are, what the alternatives are, as to whether, you know, putting something off is, you know, smart or stupid, or, uh, putting a Band-Aid on, is that smart or stupid? Uh, we're not going to be finding seventy-five thousand for the high-efficiency modular boiler, you know, in the next few months.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, get that opinion, I mean, he doesn't, if, he needs to be, if he could be here, then great, if not for June, I would say at least like a good opinion about that.
Right.
Yeah, um, and, and I, he, he will be here, if, if that's what you're requesting. I think he wanted to just address it for that first blush, so you can understand what he's struggling with. But we always, generally in June, we look at what might be left, and then what kinds of things we'd like to do if there is any money left, uh, that we haven't used up during the school year. And, um, unfortunately, these are big, you know, bigger items. Last year, we did lines and, um, I don't know, floors or rugs or something, and, um, this year, these, these things are important. The kids came to school on a very cold day into a very cold building, and, uh...
But we have that under control now, or we, we got it under control when we realized that the automated system wasn't working, and so, I think...
Well, it's on automatic delivery.
It got automatic delivery, and we have, we realize that if we're really worried, we got to go stick a long stick down there.
Yeah, so, um, but I think that he would, he would come and present again. Um, he struggles with saving money, but on the other hand, there's always a risk involved if you get a refurbished product, but the item is thir- thirty years old, so, do you want to put ten thousand dollars into an item that you may? We don't know, but maybe two, three years down the road, uh, we could do a capital improvement for a seventy-five thousand dollar boiler, I, I don't know. But if we have already put ten thousand into it this year or next year, then that takes away from what we could do later. But if you put fifteen hundred in now and take that risk, but then we'd be throwing away the money if it doesn't work.
One, one, of course, I, I just want to, again, remind that there, um, there has been a, uh, group here doing examination of this building, as well as all the buildings in town. Uh, their report is due, I was told it was going to take three, four months, and the work was being done, and I think March, April timeframe, April timeframe, something like that. So, there will be, uh, the, uh, the report and recommendations from that group that will be on the table. Um, and because that is a audit of all the buildings in the town, then it will, you know, obviously, there will be involvement of the, not only Capital Planning Committee, but the Selectmen in terms of, you know, what we're going to try and do, under what schedule, accessing what sort of funds. And so, to me, it's like, yes, it's the building here that we're responsible for, but it's also the town's building, I've said this before. And so, I expect those other parties to be, um, involved in deciding how we go forward with these things, not just immediate, you know, not just immediately, but in the upcoming years, because there's both a lot of, uh, real-world experience in, in those folks, um, you know, very much so when it comes to building stuff, and also in terms of the planning to determine the best way of funding it, and on what schedule to start funding it. So, um, you know, certainly one of the things I will do, I expect, you know, next Monday evening, is take this information with Board of Selectmen and say, hey, this is going on, uh, just so you know, we're going to be dealing with these, and who knows what other issues that the building audit comes up with, and also that Mr. Lesko has identified in his stuff, and, um... You know, I mean, sometimes we have stuff that we can't wait for the report to come out, we got to take care of, like, I think this subject issue is. But then the other stuff, it's like, you know, I'm not saying we've put off stuff, it's just that there's, we're working on a process to really put a lot of, you know, a lot of good brains onto, you know, how we deal with all this stuff. And it's going to require some, um, significant financing, okay? But there are ways to do that, and there are ways to possibly get, uh, you know, outside money to help with some of this stuff, and so on, so, um... Yeah, we'll, we'll be talking about this stuff a bunch, but it's not just, it's not just our committee that is like carrying the whole burden here. I just, I guess that's the point, that it's, it's a mutual thing across other parts of the town, and so it's just, you know, my intention is just get them involved and educated, right away.
So, I think this is helpful for that.
Yeah, so this is great for that, I'm just, I'm just going to take this to them and say, here, you guys ought to know what's going on here, and our plan is to deal with page one.
Yep.
And, you know...
So, we want to make a motion for, uh...
Do you have any idea what the schedule is?
Page one, please.
Do you have any idea what the schedule is for, um, doing the page one work?
Are they doing it, um...
I haven't heard from Bob.
Okay, no, I don't, I don't, but I, I assume ASAP.
Yeah.
We just wanted to, you know, we need guidance on, on all of these. Um, I don't think this is a choice, and I think you want to schedule it.
Do I get a, an electronic version of this?
Yes.
Okay, because then I will send it to them tomorrow morning, okay? Because just in case, you know, Mr. Feidenkevitz is a very smart man, and he deals with a lot of stuff. He deals with pipes and things like that, okay? And if there's anything on there that, you know, causes him alarm, or causes him to say, hold it, you know, have you thought about doing some this or that, or who knows what, you know, just so that he's aware of it sooner rather than later. You know, just so that he's aware of it sooner rather than later.
Great, do you still want Bob Esco to be here for the June meeting?
I think it would be very useful because I think that um. You know, I'd even sort of like to walk down the darn boiler and have a look so we actually know what we're talking about here, I I'm not insisting right now we go out and look in the sewage dam. Okay, but I think for the boilers, it would it would be useful for us to um. Would know, make sure we know what we're talking about and I know that, you know, when we were talking about the uh the. Uh, replacement of that big hot water heater that the town is now appropriated funds for, that is, and I believe in the mechanical room. And Scott Bergeron, another one of the selectmen, said I've spent a lot of time in that mechanical room, okay, so these are guys that, you know. We got, we got a lot more, i- i- we got a lot more, we got a lot of experience on this committee in education, we've got a lot of experience in. Real world building stuff and I wanna make sure we take advantage of that.
So that that's great, um, and I think that's exactly what Bob wants to put it out there, let you know.
Right.
Uh, so there's no surprises, but I I uh I do think the sewage thing probably needs to be scheduled to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna give a heads up right away.
So we made a motion for uh to use. Part of the ninety-one sixty-six fourteen from the oil fund to address the uh two sewage ejector pumps. On your hands.
I I I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.
I think that's all we had for business.
Um, could I just say a couple of comments on financial success, the subject here, um, I. As you know, and sometimes perhaps you're dismayed by, I ask a lot of questions about the financial stuff here. Um, I actually had been meaning to and I finally got around to uh having just a one-on-one meeting with Patty. Uh, last week to talk about um. You know, our, the way we do things and 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 how we could uh. Keep up. Keep me not from getting irritated at her, keep her from not getting irritated at me, uh, have a, in a way that, and we had a really good discussion, okay, I I. Went on for about an hour and um I got a lot more admiration for her skills and her ability and her. Uh, devotion to doing the best job possible for this school and I think she understood that, you know, we're basically coming from the same place, we wanna make this. As we can and do as good a job as we can and then uh what surprised me perhaps a little bit was she said that. Um, she actually liked the idea of me wanting to know a lot more about stuff inside the budget and how the finances work because she said. That there are times when she's been in a position where she's the one that knows and so you get this bit of a feeling of sticking your neck out and if there's something wrong, you haven't had somebody else just really check it. And um, actually, and I know that when I used to run the finance committee, there was that same sort of feeling that you wanna. Be sure you're right and if you could get somebody else to check your figures, but often it's time because it takes a bunch of nitty. Little stuff and so on, um, again, I don't have a job and I don't have kids to take care of, so I'm happy to do that and. So, one thing, you know, when we we discussed um. How we could could go about, you know, making that work and she suggested, she said, you know. Jesus, I'm real busy, I come in here at six in the morning, she says, you know, I it's a long day, so on, but when there's a committee meeting, some of the school committee. She says, you start your committee meeting at six and my day here at the office basically wraps up at five, so I'm just sitting over there waiting. Uh, for the meeting and she said, you remember the time you called me up and said, can I come in early and bring the warrant, cause I wanted to look at it. I said, yeah, I felt like I was imposing, she said, no, I was delighted to do that, she says, because here was somebody that was interested and again, I'm sitting around waiting for the meeting, so what we. Set up, okay, agreed to was to start out trying to see if this works for her to come over here basically not much after five o'clock on the. On the evenings that we have meetings and for me to come and obviously anybody else in the committee would be welcome. Um, to just, you know, ask whatever questions, go through stuff whatever we can, um, to uh. You know, I think it'll help her and I think it certainly will help me and I thought that that was, and I was just delighted with her with her offer to do that. Um, so, like I say, the plan is to start doing that, you know, each time we have a meeting to to come over and and anyone's welcome, the only thing I would guess is that once we get. If we had a quorum, I'm not really expecting people to be interested, cause I know you got jobs and it's hard getting here earlier, but if if we had a quorum, then we gotta worry about. You know, no, you know, open meeting rules and stuff like that, but.
So we just have to make sure those, anything that. You know, has any kind of whiff of getting into deliberation about stuff, it's not just informative and asking quite, you know, questions, that we then instantly. Table that kind of discussion for for meetings.
Right, right. But I'm not, you know, I'm sort of not expecting, you know, I'd be delighted if they were more interested because again, it helps, you know, everybody understand stuff, but. I'd like to, you know, we're gonna try this, we're gonna see what happens, obviously, if it's just me and her or me and one other committee and her, there's not a quorum, so there's no open meeting consideration. And then my anticipation would be just to give a short report during the committee meeting as to uh stuff we may have talked about or concerns that, you know, or. Either concerns or possible good things or whatever that may have been, you know, whatever, just to keep you all informed, so.
Yeah.
Um, there's that, the the other thing that uh uh we we just discussed, I guess it was more. Uh, my, uh, we talked about obviously the override, okay, and. Um, I think that, you know, I wanna acknowledge uh with thanks the support of of all the people in town. Uh, that voted for that, um, it was uh certainly not a unanimous vote, but it was more than a squeaker and that was nice to see. Um, I think, I hope people realize that uh that what we're trying to do here uh is something that uh benefits the whole town. Um, and again, I was, you know, it 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 was nice to see the vote, on the other hand. I discussed this a bit with Slekman at their meeting last week, um, this is not in the slightest a call for great, now we could do new spending. Or something like that, that what this does is it helps give a bit of stability to to the town's finances. Uh, without saying, hey, you got a bunch more money, okay, and so it's gonna take. Uh, continued hard work and smart thinking to make budgets work, okay, um. And uh, so I just think that's, you know, again, it's 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 a it's a real thanks to the to to the support of the people in town, but. We gotta work harder than ever to be smart about how we manage our money, because we can't keep going back to that well. So anyway, there's, I think that's, let's check my notes here, um. Yeah, that's that was pretty much from my uh meeting with Patty, I just wanted to fill you all in on. I was, again, I was very encouraged by it and very much in admiration of the work she does, boys.
Thank you. I like the idea of that, um, you know, she can take that time, you know, I don't know how long I could.
Yeah.
Make it, but I would certainly try because I think it's, you know, it's definitely.
It also may well cut down the length of meetings also.
Yeah.
Because if we can, you know.
Get some of that information clear to us going in, then it's easy to focus on what we really need to talk about.
Yeah, right. Right. Correct.
So I kind of, I tried not to be here so we don't have a violation of the committee law, I guess.
That would be fine, I would, that would be much free.
I do, we can check it, but I do think as long as we are, you know, really. Sticking to it being informational and not getting into, you know, discussions and, you know.
Right. Right. Well, we'll, we'll deal with that if the situation arises.
Right, right, so.
Thank you.
Cause I think, you know, the open meeting law is not, in 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 I think, in the in the training program that like uh that happens in November. Um, you know, they emphasize this, it's not trying to um prevent the things that make for good governance, like being informed. Right, and getting the information. Um, it is, but it is, you know, about, um, you know. Transparency to the public, you know, so so, you know.
We just, we wanna make sure.
Actually aren't getting into the business of deciding things and deliberating and discussing and so on, then that that needs to be public. Um, and you know, in in a meeting that's been properly publicized as well, which all makes good sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Peter, um. All right. So moving to uh public comment, uh, we have no public, but I'll just say, I just just piggyback on what you said, Peter, I just, you know, want to express. Express my gratitude to the people of Sunderland for, um, you know, for for voting. For the override that allows us to carry forward with the budget. Um, that we put forward to the town this year, um, and not likely having to go back to the table on that if it hadn't passed, so. Very grateful for that and and for all the folks who worked to get out the the word about the vote, um, and what the, you know, issues were at stake for the school, this wasn't. Just about the schools, the whole town, but certainly was significantly schools, uh, big part of that budget, so. Greatly appreciated all the friends and and support. Um, uh, and yeah, like you said, it's also just the beginning for us, so, you know, the work, the hard work continues, you know, year after year of making that. Optimizing what we what we do have, so, um, all right, uh. So moving on to, um, is there any other comment or public comment section? Uh, unfinished business, we've got our, um, so first, the, um. Discussion items amendment to or adoption of following policies. Um, as recommended by the Frontier Regional Policy of Use of in uh in ASC.
Is the Frontier Regional amendment created policies so?
I was thinking, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I I need to change that.
Right.
So you have them all and then, um. Keith was there at the Frontier Regional meeting on last Tuesday night and so there are a, there were three of them that we amended. Very, very slightly tonight, we had a fifteen minute meeting and we amended, we took out, um. Alarm in each one and just amended those, um, after discussion about cell phone news, about teachers contacting students. And so long as the principal knows or the designated knows, uh, coaches, uh, drama coaches, uh, court coaches, these. They text students, uh, if there's a cancellation or if there's a change of plans, they text parents, it sounds gonna be late, whatever. So, um, that where originally was not allowed, we modified that, uh, that, we made amended on that one. Uh, social media, uh, we took out.
Let's see, was the, uh, yeah, was the one about only through the the district's computers?
Yes. And we took that out because again, we will be texting and uh the the uh kind of uh came up was, uh.
Same thing.
One of the things, uh, so students have your cell phone number, they know your cell phone number, but if your phone number. Your home phone number is published, it's published in the phone book or whatever or in white pages, so what's the difference kind of thing? So we took that out as unnecessary, that one line, and then in school choice, we have a hundred sixty students at Frontier Regional, uh, that are school choice. And uh, it says that preference would be given to resident students for certain programs or classes. And actually, the way it's done at the Frontier Regional High School is by grade level, so students that are seniors get kind of first priority because it's their last year to get the classes. So, um, regardless of whether you're a school choice or a resident student, you're a senior, you're graduating and need that credit for that elective. Uh, sophomore, so if you're up against a resident sophomore, a school choice senior, it really and truly, we would have a school choice senior take the class because the. Resident sophomore has two hundred years to meet, so we took out that line so that we could be equal to all students that come to the first school. So those will be going out to you tomorrow in their, um, amended form and hopefully next month, we can vote on it all. Uh, this hard work, we did quite a few of them, but necessary, very minor, I mean, we have, we did not revamp anything, they were all very minor fixes. But just because the laws keep, uh, changing and. The laws keep changing and it it's kind of a moving target, so to maintain our protection and our understanding. There's many, many times an administrator has to go to the policy board and say, this is the policy and this is what we follow, this is how we work, this is how. So those would be voted on.
Did you wanna vote, I, there was a list of all the policies that was with one of the mail-in's we got and it had a bunch of them, it'd be. Like about ten or twelve of them said. Discussion and vote at this meeting and then the rest said new ones and they were per discussion and then the vote will be held at the June meeting. Do you wanna vote on that first set tonight or you wanna vote on everything at the June meeting?
I would say vote on everything in the June meeting.
Okay.
Um.
Didn't seem like there was any reason to vote faster on the first group.
Yeah.
No, what and and how like Frontier does it, uh, they've had plenty of time to study them and. Of course, we asked for questions at the joint meeting in April for both of them, but we did in May do several, which those are the ones listed there and then tonight we did three. So, uh, unless there's any really outstanding questions, they've kind of just, they just kind of vote them off, you know, vote.
Well, we can do, yeah, we can do that in June, we could just see if we have any, if there's any concerns with any particular one and if not, vote them as a group.
Yeah.
Gregory, you happy with how things?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's it's a little back and forth, you know, what does the administration want? As long as it's not, uh, offensive to the sensibilities of the community, we uh we try to fund language that supports what they want to do their jobs and.
And, um, my understanding is, uh, that, uh, President Modesto went through these, all of these, uh, policies with the MTA, uh, the Frontier Regional MTA. So they've all passed muster by the union and by the administration and by the subcommittee and of course by the MASCE. The Masters Associate School Committee, so I think we've done due diligence on the law, but we're always open for suggestions.
I do have one.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And it seems to come up and I don't know if it got, um. Can't take any conclusions with Frontier, there is GB one about compensation, does that have any effect on Sunderland, is that the Frontier committee?
The compensation for work done outside of the, um, so when you're doing, um. So some people get compensation, maybe in Sunderland, if they are part of, uh, like a team leader. Uh, for like leaders across the union, so like I'm a fifth grade team leader, so I'm, I guess, siphoned for being a team leader, a lot of fifth grade. Teachers in the in the union.
I think it was the longevity is what they had in the year and it was tabled.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if there, if there's any room on that.
No, we're not touching that, uh, because the upshot was, were you in for some of those? We just spent three or four, an hour and a half meetings on us, we tabled it because the goal would be to have a subcommittee commence in the fall.
I was around some.
To really go through that non-union, uh, it's it's not a contract, but it's a non-union policy procedure. And have to really look at it because you started out with longevity, but then it got kind of mixed in with vacation days and then sick day buyback. And then all of these other pieces and then, um, one day, the time we invited Patty to come to the meeting and she kinda. Gave her perspective and, uh, one of the committee members had a different perspective, so that kind of thing was. Let's take that out of these policies, cause it's not really, it's more of a procedure, GB one is a procedure and there's a number after it. So that, the goal would be, and I hope it happens, that in the fall, new subcommittees form just to look at that. Those non-union employees and those are school secretaries, uh, custodians, um. The bookkeepers, the accounting people that work in the office, receptionists.
So, my understanding, some of the concerns brought up was something around the idea of. Doing budgeting and finances of school policy, that that should go through, um, the financial. Aspect rather than just doing.
Right, so do you mean it or the, um, the ta- Right, so the, or the tabled to the fall with, to have it done before December, before we start the new budgeting. Although what we, a budget, we made, what we had proposed impacted maybe four thousand dollars across the entire district. And so each school meeting had a thousand or two thousand at the max impact. But it would have been too late anyway this year to do it, we would have waited till next year anyway. But then it opened up like a Pandora's box and all these other issues, like a chain reaction. So we said, let's have a subcommittee just work on that in the fall and before the budgeting.
So it's been, to her point, a part of the issue is, it's not just the non-union stuff, but it's also making sure that the union and the non-union, everyone's sort of at the same level. And that there aren't any time moms built in, in terms of ability to sell back vacation at the end of a long career or something like that. So it is a bigger task to sort of, when there are policies that impact financial stuff and the two can't be unmixed, try to, try to make that level so that the non-union and the union, everyone is playing by the same. And in addition to that, there was a lot of discussion of other town employees not necessarily having that same opportunity.
That's, that's.
So it's my understanding that, that when we vote these policies as a group, that will not be in it?
It should not be in there, but I can, I'll double check though, because I wanna be sure I'm saying the right thing. But I do not believe we came to any conclusion or any resolution on GB or GB one.
I didn't see it in the list, what was Dr. Lucian out?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a real fine, there's a, there's a real fine detail in there that we really need to look at. And of course, next year too, your CBAs are all going to have to be renegotiated.
Wow, next year we're getting one. Yeah. Alright. Um, thank you. Thanks, so. We had vote on the agenda, but any objection to table that, to do it as a group, did you?
Oh, that sounded like what?
Yes.
Good recommendation.
Great, thank you.
If you see, if I see an error, we wanna identify that now prior to, for school council. BDFAE, it says the school council shall meet quarterly, which is the amendment. And then on BDFAE three, the school council shall meet at least once a monthly school year.
Yeah, that needs to be changed to quarterly, so let's do that. E three is a procedure, it's not a policy, but we'll change that too to say quarterly. Yeah, you can't meet, I mean, you run out of things, you know. I'll check that out.
When we vote the policies, but we did have the, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and the procedure will say the same word.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm not sure what it was.
Alright, thanks. Alright. New business, so discussion and vote on increasing the cost of school lunch.
So essentially, the school lunch now is two eighty-five, we'd like to put it up to two ninety-five. And the reason that we need to do that is the reimbursement for free reduced lunch, for free lunch, the federal cost, the federal reimbursement cost is two dollars and ninety-two cents. We cannot legally charge less than what the federal government is willing to reimburse us or else we have to pay back that money to the federal government. So we recommend putting this cost of school lunch up to two ninety-five to be three cents more than the two ninety-two the federal government is reimbursing us for free reduced lunch, and we, we do need to get it.
May I be effective with starting a new school year?
I was twenty-eight, I was twenty-nine.
I should raise the, the price for the school lunch from two eighty-five to two ninety-five.
Second, okay. So, so I'm trying to remember how the history of our, on this, we, we went to, to me from, was it, two, you think it was a couple of years ago? Yeah.
Yeah, been two years, I believe, from late in old minutes.
Right, and that was, the increase was from, that's what I'm thinking, was it also a ten cents?
It was two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five to two. Um, yeah.
And it's basically right in line with what inflation is.
A little higher, a little bit faster than inflation.
Well, inflation's around, is about, just about two percent. And two percent on not quite three bucks would be five cents a year and we're doing ten cents in two, over two years, so. Right about there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But though also, I mean, we are required to, you know, the federal, federal government's got its number and we actually do get in trouble if we.
Yeah, yeah, no, we don't, I don't think there's much of a, we don't wanna have to budget in for.
Reimbursing.
Reimbursing, so, yeah, I just wanted to get.
And I think it clearly makes sense to do, you know, the nearest nickel rather than.
Yeah.
You know, going with the exact penny driving nuts.
Oh, I honestly, you know, there are districts, I think Chickenee and Holio. Everybody gets moss and they, everybody gets free lunch, no question, it's lunches provided. I do not think any of our other schools are, and I don't think that we are, we're about fifty percent now for free reduced lunch, and I don't think that that is quite high enough. But I, I, we can certainly look into what the percentage is, that would be such a boost to all of us.
Yeah, I mean, if we'll.
Yeah, so where is that, she's just like.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know. I'm guessing we are not.
I'm not sure what the federal regulation is, but there are school districts in Massachusetts that you go and you get free lunch, it's automatic, or you know, that lunch is provided as part of the educational protection.
So just as a matter of perspective, the, the school lunch cost was supposed to be raised at Frontier, so three ten and that was rolled down to remain at three dollars. But I think what we have here is we don't have federal guidelines, so to me, we have to stay in line with that, so this will be one.
Maybe, are you gonna check in with this fact then?
Yeah, I'm doing it for Mary.
Great, I mean, I, I doubt, I expect we'll be disappointed, but you'd like to know for sure.
Something to know. Know it, Mary, if we had a chance, we'll be doing it.
Right.
We will be doing it now.
Right.
Alright, yeah, we do have, we have the motion on the table already, so, sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, so discussion and vote on appointment of cafeteria team leader.
So this is the, I don't know how many, yeah, but we sent it, but this is the cafeteria team leader job description that was handed out in April. And the vote tonight is, would you vote this job description in particularly for the person working at Sunderland? So we have a food service director and she's wonderful. I can't think of anyone who doesn't think she's wonderful, she's just really wonderful. And, but in each school, we have a team leader that is just, you know, to, responsible for, well, let's take a look. They're responsible because she can't be in five places at once. Overseen and assisting all needed aspects of food preparation, preparation and serving, works with the food service director for purchasing and ordering, taking monthly inventory, ensures the equipment is clean, safe, and maintains accurate production records, health and safety standards, food allergy prevention. So what this is, is that the person that would be the cafeteria team leader would get a little bit more per hour than the regular cafeteria worker, so that they have a little bit more responsibility. And when the food service director isn't able to be here, that person is the one that is essentially in charge. It's like the lead teacher when the principal's out of the building. I'm not positive who that person in Sunderland would be, but the idea is we're asking the school committees to vote for the position. It's a new position, we need to bring new positions to the school committee, they could get their pay. I'm thinking it's fifteen, fifteen to fifty cents more now, depending on where they are now and where.
This is brought, brought before the elementary school committees and how they're going on.
It has, it, it's been brought to all the elementary school committees, it was introduced in April, but I don't know, there's a technicality because in, for instance, in Deerfield and Whately, it wasn't put on the agenda the same way it was here, so we have to wait till June to vote on it. The, our, our agenda states that there's a vote, Holloway's agenda will state that there's a vote for the position. But the other two, it didn't go on, it didn't go through as a vote and it just was like an introduction to it. So we didn't get to vote, but it's, that's a matter of semantics. We all saw it in April, we assumed everyone would be voting, but.
Can I, um, how many cafeteria workers are there?
Three.
Um, the assumption is that it would be one of those three, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not going out to replace somebody to find a team leader or something like that. From one of those, certainly, I mean, do you have someone in mind or?
Yes, yep.
Well, we kinda have her, right there, yeah.
Um, Alison Crozier.
Okay. And also, this like, all the salaries of the cafeteria workers are paid out of the revolving fund. So that that would not affect or, has no impact on the regular budget going forward.
No, no, these were all included when we, when we developed the budget. And these, and the next thing we'll be talking about are the non-union increases. And these are, these were all included as part of our budget, but.
Do you think Peter's, Peter's point was that, that that kind of comes through?
They come out of the, out of the revolving fund.
The revolving fund.
The cafeteria workers, their salary.
Right, so it only would impact us if there was, if we needed to supplement that fund as we have done recently, but.
And actually, I, one thing I did talk to Patty about was the status of the revolving fund because you may remember there was a, there was a differing view as to what the status of the fund was. And I had gotten the number from the town accountant, it was, was significantly higher and it seems like that's the number that we're going with because that's real money in the bank. And so I asked her again if it was possible because it seemed like, if it was possible to put the food service director's salary, the Sunderland part, to finance that back through the revolving fund. Let's say she took that under advisement, I'll probably bring it up again, it wasn't clear, you know, how easy that would be with, if, to, you know, perhaps, I think the, I mean, right now, the, the argument was, well, all the towns voted to have it, you know, handled through the financial channels to put it into the regular budget rather than putting it in the revolving fund. And so it was difficult to change just this one town. Um, she did say that there are certainly some things in terms of the equipment that's being used in the cafeteria, in the kitchen, whatever the proper term is, that having this money in the revolving fund will allow that, you know, some replacement or fixing there that won't have to come out of the regular budget. So that's something, but it's still, it's not clear to me as to whether we can also possibly shift the food service director's salary back in there. It depends, again, I mean, it seems like the finances for the revolving fund are do, you know, it seems like things are going better. So I don't know, you know, gotta wait and see a little bit, but.
So my understanding is the food service director's salary, the director, comes from the general budget.
Right.
The cafeteria workers.
Comes through the revolving fund.
Comes from the lunch fund itself.
Correct.
Right, so these people are coming, their salaries are coming from the lunch fund.
Correct.
And if you see the cafeteria team leader, where that person was this year versus where that person will be. And the reason why that person is going up, this is the biggest jump of all, of all the schools. And that is because the person beneath, or the person who is not the team leader was making that much more than, than, um.
Right.
So we have put her up to, and then they get a two percent raise, so, yeah, so she's.
I mean, so having done some time in the military, it's good to have one person who's sort of in charge and has a designated role, sometimes there's a current pay associated with that.
These people work very, very hard.
Why was, why was the current pay differing between the three?
Because it was based on steps, the years in and equal. Because the, the food service director that you were paying for before just kept them, it was, it was just based on.
I, I, I believe the, the big difference in pay to begin with was that the individual with the highest amount transferred from another school. Maybe the frontier where the pay was a little bit higher, and brought that salary.
Are you happy with what the new arrangement would be going forward in terms of having a, a, a efficient operation there?
Absolutely, yeah, I would support it.
Okay.
I think it's been working this way this year, that this person's taking this responsibility, um, that hasn't got the pay for it.
Yeah, right, I mean, I mean, I would be, you know, I'm, my sense, I would really like to have more figures, which I plan on getting. But my sense is that the revolving fund is in good shape, okay, the revolving fund actually could be said to be in very good shape. And, but it's still a question of on an annual basis, you know, we should be clearly running in the black, okay? And I, because we're not, we don't have the food service director costing there. But I think even with this change, we still should be running in the black.
I think we are pretty, pretty close to it.
But I don't have the numbers.
Yeah, but she, I, I think we are making gains in all of our schools and.
And the last time I got a number from the town treasurer, let me look here. Ending balance as of May fourth, twenty-four thousand.
In the red or?
In, as, oh yeah, over twenty-four thousand the red, and he screamed, yelled, no.
I was scared, I would be very scared.
And he actually said that, and Patty's response to that was, and that number actually will probably go up a little bit because there's a delay in getting federal reimbursements and so, um. I mean, I, I, no, I'm not, I'm not complaining to the university, that's for sure.
Compared to where we were, we really are making gains.
Yes.
It, it was a tough, dull, getting consulted in and all the people, but in the end, the upshot is all of our schools are doing much better and we've got a wonderful food service.
And you have a, now a computer system that does the sort of automatic billing and sending out notices and stuff like that? And that's working fine?
Yep, it's working very well, I, the principals meet. Yep, it's working very well. Um, I, the principals meet with the mayor, the food service director monthly, last Monday of every month. Um, which gives us a refund out of the financials. Um, and then any families that are carrying, um, a large balance, we call them. Uh, just to remind them of where it's at.
So that's all working
Yep.
as well as it can?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I mean, my only, it seems completely reasonable and appropriate. Um, that my only hesitation is knowing there's been a lot of, uh, you know, deliberation within the town overall, um, in terms of, you know, the personnel committee, um, for, you know, where, what compensation for, you know, that, or, you know, where, where it seems like Sunderland's a little, um, below our peers, but we've had, you know, trouble, um, uh, you know, cor- cor- you know, correcting that, um, just, you know, because of the financial situation. You know, there's been also some, some pushback in terms of the information supporting it, although to me it seems like there's been a lot of information that it's a, it's a pretty, it's pretty clear. We can keep looking for more and more research, but in any event, um, this is a little different because it's, 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 it's the one position that has more responsibility relative up to others and that. So I, I get that different context, but it just, I don't wanna, I feel like my only concern is upsetting the apple cart in town with all, you know, with the work that's happened on this, with people who are in other parts of the town and library and whatnot. Also kind of to some extent on hold in terms of adjustments. I mean, there was the agreement on the, on the COLA increase and stuff, but not, not other adjustments. Um, so I don't know if we've had any feedback at all from like the personnel committee in town. Or, you know, and I realize this again, you know, because, you know, it's a little different that it comes out of the revolving fund, but, but that's sort of splitting here. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't fall back too much on that.
The only thing I would say is that, um, coming out of revolving fund, the status of the revolving fund that's paying the salaries depends is, you know, should be better if you have smarter, better people
Couldn't agree with.
running the operation.
I, I couldn't agree with more. I think it's appropriate.
The question is, you know, I mean, I, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying too. And I, I would feel that argument more keenly if this were adjusting salary uh, to make someone's compensation more fair relative to the work that they're doing. Instead, what we're doing is creating a position that has more responsibility than has been had in it. So, you know. Yeah.
Uh, I, I think it's, it's definitely a valid position. The food service director can't be everywhere. The, uh, the expectations now are much higher than they were under the last food service director. Uh, we've learned to streamline a lot of things due to the audit we had and then the changes that were kind of posted upon everyone in the fall. But these, uh, position, this position is going to come with a lot more work and a lot more responsibility and no extra hours.
When, when would this go into effect?
Uh, next, uh.
In the fall?
In the fall. And it's already, yeah.
I mean, my inclination, I, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I think it's an appropriate thing to do. My, my gut is, um, I don't want to be overridden if that's, you know, of course, but, um, is just to, to, um, you know, respecting the goodwill, I feel like that's been built up between different departments within the town and all the work that went, that we all jointly did together. Uh, to, to, um, try to support the, the budget that we have and get the override that would allow us to support it. I'd hate to compromise any of that by not just kind of doing the due diligence of, you know, maybe just going through and making sure that, that, that this, you know, just check with the personnel committee and say, hey, you know, this is a situation. It's not like we're just, we're bumping our, all our, I mean, obviously we're not bumping any of the other ones. We're just doing this one. It does reflect the job, but I'd still rather do that and then, and, and pass this in June. Um.
Would you?
You know, with the, you know, that would be my.
Are there any comparable jobs in town that the personnel committee could?
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, potentially, I mean, that's what I, you know, that's my, you know, I, I wouldn't want, you know, here than, you know, even the town office or in the, or, and anywhere else. It's like, well, this person also had, takes, has these extra responsibilities, but we just haven't been able to pay them more. I don't know that that's true. Uh, again, I just feel like in the spirit of like in this together, um, um, just to be a little bit.
Where did the hourly number come from here?
There is a step, um, there's a page behind it that talks about the salary schedule. And these are the steps of all the people in the union that are engaged in this, um, in the food service. So this person is now at step two and the other person is still at step one. And then the new one is even below that, or the, uh, this one is a part-time. She only works two hours a day, so. Uh, the, these steps are established in what we had spoken about earlier. Keith was mentioning, uh, procedure GB one. This is the non-union salary schedule that we have in place. So.
But this wasn't the point of contention in GB one? This was?
No, no, the point of contention was vacation, I think that, and security, yeah, non-jubilee and that sort of stuff. So, but this is what we follow because it's standard for non-union employees. And you, I don't know if, how many of you have this, um, document, this, uh. And again, your, uh, union schools will be doing, will be following the same. They will, all the team leaders, the four team leaders will be doing the same thing there as the one in Frontier. And, uh, we need to have somebody with their feet on the ground, with that extra responsibility to make sure the show goes off every day without a hitch. Um, this is just a matter of doing business appropriately. When you, uh, are, when you're an administrator and you can't be there, you have a, a lead, a team leader. And this person runs the, the actual program every day. So the food service director comes in, checks in, makes sure that everything's, you know, and then leaves. This work is done by your team. You need to have a team.
Yeah, someone needs to manage.
Yep.
Hey, is, is the question. I mean, maybe I'm being overly sensitive to the, I, I just, I just, you know.
I don't think that there's anything wrong with waiting till June. We don't have to have this done now. So if you want, we can do diligence. I look at it this way. This, I think it is important that this is coming out of revolving fund. This is coming out of the money that is generated within the school that we just raised.
Yeah.
This is less than I pay my rent, for instance.
I, 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 I get it.
Right. That, that, to me, I'm like looking at this like, yes, these are the people that handle food for our kids every single day. It's not as much as handling college kids.
I would hope so too. I'm, I'm supportive. I just, I feel like in good faith to, to just kind of.
And do complete diligence and then turn it on and we go there with me.
Okay, so you want to table this until June and you're looking for more information?
I'd just like to consult and.
Oh, you want to consult?
With the, um.
Don't you want me to run before our selectmen next week?
Sure.
Okay, then let me just make sure. I just got a couple.
And really, and, and if there's a way to get it to the, uh, personnel.
One of them, I mean, there's, again, each selectman has responsibility for certain committees and so I think it's David, David, he's the one that knows everything about what's going on in personnel committees.
And to put him in, to give him the context, this is why, it's not like we're just arbitrarily bumping or whatever.
What, what step would this put her at?
Two. Um, so this is what the, uh, and I'll give this two.
I saw that, right. I just.
And then OD, you see the step two, the step two.
Oh, here it is, yep. Yep, I gotta hear it, okay.
And then the step one. So the second lieutenant is step one.
So, so then I guess I gotta ask, cause there's somebody on here, the third one on.
She's only a two-hour.
This list, and so she doesn't qualify for being on the step.
No, she's not a step. This is for, you know, full-time employees, but the, uh, the second lieutenant is a step one and the cafeteria is a step.
And how long has Alison been working in our cafeteria?
It's been, this is her third year, I believe. But I think that the steps, that is only for the team leader position.
Is that?
Yeah, I believe so, because there, there, there is a difference in.
Oh, okay. So, um, and again, the other person, the second lieutenant came from another school where the salary was a little bit higher. Frontier.
Correct. And the justification for step, I'm just trying to anticipate questions. The reason for picking, uh, step two was?
That as a cafeteria team leader, she has more responsibilities.
And obviously we're talking at the bottom end of the steps, step schedule here, so.
But you felt like appropriate to bring, so when you hired, right, some, somebody, I mean, with, with teachers right now, sometimes come in, you know, when you bring in experience with it.
Right. And so what's her experience? How many years has she been doing this?
She, this is, I believe, her third.
I don't know where, where she came from. I don't know. All I know is currently she's doing a factory.
And was she doing food service before she came here?
Sure. One question, it's kind of procedural. Um, are these salaries uniform around the districts? From school to school to school? I'm just wondering.
Sounds like not even.
Yeah, that's, I'm wondering, and I'm not trying to like really go at somebody's pay. Why would somebody from Frontier come here and they get their Frontier pay here if we have a different pay schedule or scale?
We can't pay somebody else. I know what you, I know what you're saying and that happened to me lately too. They move out of Frontier and they, and they have great skills and we continue at their salary that they have in Frontier. That was a, a practice that was established before my time. So they come with these great skills, but then they, they don't take a cut in pay to come here. It, it is, it is.
Is there any difference in the job description or expectation between the elementary school and the high school? And I wouldn't, is it, is there a higher volume at the, at the high school? And I, and I don't want to go down, really down the road, but is it something we can work at the high school and then get out of there for a while?
So when you take into consideration even the CBAs for the union thirty-eight schools and Frontier contributes, more teachers get paid more than the union schools. Um, the, in the cafeteria, it is, it's more volume, it's more cooking. They have many more options, many more, uh, entrees. They also have salad bar and all these other things are preparing. So the job is, is a little bit more, um, uh, involved than it is here. They make one, you know, one entree, but they suit to nuts. They do everything by themselves here. So, uh, the ele, the, uh, the union schools get a different pay than the, uh, so even when you look at GB and GB one, GB one is for union schools and GB is for Frontier regional. They just happen to be the, um, you know, the showcase of the district. They get more, they do more. I'm sure it's the same way in every district, but the high school is.
It just strikes me that there's a little bit of inconsistency.
Well, between, I can't change the regional with the union, but with the union, this position will be in all the schools and this step will be for the, uh, the team leader and it, it's a necessary step. We have to compensate that team leader.
Yeah, oh, Alison, that, that, that one, it's the.
Regardless of what other people in Sunderland are making or in the pound, this is a job that if I'm doing it here, I'm doing it in Deerfield or I'm doing it in Conway's, it's the same job, depending on how many years I have been. Then I go up the steps. If I've been here thirty years or I'm on one step, thus the same. So she's, uh.
So like, but it would be comparable because I think teachers are licensed, like, K through five, six through twelve. So if you had somebody who was at Frontier teaching sixth grade at a certain salary and they were to come here, would they get that salary? Would they get that same salary or would they fall under the Sunderland? So that there's a little bit of inconsistency there.
Well, I don't know if they would go down. I don't know. You're right, in the high school, they have to have this special certification. If I'm teaching science at the high school, I'm not only certified, you know, whatever, seven, twelve, but I'm certified science. So I have to take a special test to be certified in science, but as far as.
There has, there hasn't been a lot of movement, at least to Sunderland, from high school or middle school to the elementary school, um, as far as that point just made, but.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that there's, it strikes me that there's a lack of consistency.
Yeah.
But they do come, so I worked over at Amherst for fifteen years and so I'm on step twenty at, at Amherst. I would come here, if they hired me, I would be step twenty. I would move any steps moving from school district to school district. So I think the pay stays the same, but the steps follow. So if I did five years at, at Frontier and I came here, I'd be on step six here because I, you know, I would do those steps. Those steps are the same, the years of experience are the same.
Right, years of experience.
So we have an IA that gets hired here, but has five years' experience being a paraprofessional in Amherst. If he comes here as an IA, then I would be step six as an IA because I have five years' experience. We don't take the experience away, but the pay is what the school pays.
Or step six is, no, Amherst is step six.
Exactly.
Right.
So.
And so in effect, that wasn't done as far as the movement there of cafeteria workers because the pay just came along with them.
In that sense, as a non-union person, you might be right. I think that is what happened.
Might have been the line of lean resistance, sort of like.
Yeah, I think that's what happened.
And I mean, Keith raised a good point. You know, that's sort of, but the problem is, to what extent is that water over the dam and, you know, we can't sit here and.
But also too, I would hesitate going to the town and comparing the school salaries and steps that are established in our non-union, our non-union procedures with what goes on in the town. I don't know if anyone is a, a team leader, a cafeteria team leader in the town. I don't know if anyone in the town understands the, um, the depth of the kind of work that's expected, the inventories and the ordering and the purchasing and understanding the ebbs and flows they count on every lunch. So we know what the pocket of lunches are, what we can do, they add. I, I don't know if anyone in the town can A, judge it, or B, understand what the intricacies of the job is because I don't think there's a comparable job in town. So sometimes we talk about, um, our receptionist makes X amount of dollars, but a receptionist as a town worker makes thus and so. Um, again, the jobs, they sound similar, but they're, they're slightly different. There's many more databases. They have to understand power school. They have to understand the provisions. They have to, you know, understand all the procedures that we have.
So are the other three elementary schools, is the proposal that each of them have a team leader pay the same amount?
Same exact.
Same exact amount?
Same exact.
Because obviously one of the concerns in the personnel committee doing, you know, a survey of, of similar towns with similar job descriptions. Here we've got, you know, the towns with exactly, the, the only thing here actually is, I don't know if it's more work or less work if you've got more kids or fewer kids, uh, in the school, but basically it's the same job as three other towns and we're paying them the same thing. And that's sort of what the personnel committee's been trying to deal with because the problem is, the problem is, is the job the same?
To have that consistency.
And the job, as you say, in a lot of cases, is not the same.
Right. So is, and has this been voted in, in other, you know, no, okay.
Well, why don't we, I mean,
Yeah.
I'm happy to wait. It's not gonna make that difference here if we wait a month.
Right.
Okay, and then to the extent that we wanna, you know. I mean, I got, I'm perfectly fine, you know, informing. I mean, that's, I consider, you know, part of our duty, but, um, I don't think there's a case for, um, really making a change in what we're proposing.
Right. I, I agree and, and I, and I hope, you know, person of question will feel like we're, we're not appreciating
Right.
the, the, the commitment and the work. It's, it's not about that at all. I think it's, it's just, um, a matter of, of practice, the practice.
If you go to the selectmen and they say, oh my gosh, that's a lot of money for cafeteria team leader.
I don't think that's what, I, I would be shocked if that would be the reaction. I.
I'm just curious as to telling them what, you know.
I mean, to me, it's also, I look at it as, and you can't say this actually about a lot of things. We could say it about some things. I mean, one of, we have a number of other revolving funds in town that people can pay through with these, for example, your inspectors. Okay, and there it's a matter of, well, if they're more. And there it's a matter of, well, if there are more inspections, they end up getting paid more, okay? But they're supposed to be both good and they're supposed to be efficient and, you know, that's what we, you know, for the town, from the town's point of view, what you're mainly concerned is, you know, do we have inspectors that are doing the job properly? So, you know, certainly that concern here is, you know, one of our concerns is, are we getting somebody good? And now if we're getting somebody good and they're getting comparable salary to, uh, other towns with, they have the same salary as other towns for the same job and, uh, there would be, this would seem to me to be moving us in the direction, in just this one item, of trying to be smarter about how we run something at the school, meaning make somebody in charge, have it a good person, so that we deal with problems that come up in a good way, we, we, we forestall bigger problems, we run an efficient operation and hopefully the revolving fund stays with a healthy balance. Now, those to me are all, you know, totally good reasons to go ahead and do this. Um, and they are, you know, it's a, it's not a situation that's so comparable to other non, you know, other non-union people in town. It's a different situation and I think it's, I think it's totally reasonable to do this, but I'm also sensitive what Doug says and, you know, you just sort of like to let people know a little bit, just in case. But, but if somebody said, well, I really don't like this ad, we go through the same list of justifications I just made, because I think it's a good case.
Yeah, the, the narrative behind this is also this, uh, we had someone retire suddenly and we found that we were doing a lot of stuff sort of ad hoc. And now we have much more structured, you know, after bringing the consultant through. We're looking to, uh, along the entire district and, and have some hierarchy, uh, so we've got some on the ground that's lined up with essential stuff. It's able to buy stuff, fortunately, or get, you know, the offsets and, and the other stuff. So that, uh, unlike teachers where it's really hard to sort of monetize the good work that they do.
Right.
In this case, we have like number of Neil Curr, we actually talked about the program moving towards the black.
Right, and, and buying the commodity, just being a lot more aware of, of how we're, of what we're feeding and how we're doing it and closing up those gaps, there were a lot of things that went through the process, so we're trying to.
So, do you want to just put a vote on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes, I will. And that raises to the non-union, um, again, this is just for your information for now, to be voted on in June, but we'd like to present it, this is our poll, this is our two percent raise, this is established to go along with the CBAs. The CBA was six percent over three years, the CBA was one percent, two point five and two point five. Ours has been two percent, two percent, two percent. And this is what, uh, we agreed on last year and this is the same as last year. So, uh, when you look at these, uh, job descriptions, especially on page two, these are the totals, but again, Sunderland only pays a portion of these totals, these district, uh, district level positions.
And the two percent is the same two percent that's in the town budget for FY nineteen?
These have already been added to the budget this year.
You want a motion on this, Doug?
Uh, well, you just said, this is.
Next time, okay, yep.
Yep. So, um, but any, any discussion, I mean, it's still discussed now? Any, anything you'd highlight, Karen?
Um, absolutely, no, not necessarily, the only thing I'm highlighting is, is these, again.
You said, yeah.
Your sal, these salaries here are, uh, on the next page, are, uh, the first page are directly related to Sunderland. The next page is broken out, um, by student FTE and Sunderland's, um, portion of it.
Um, I'm guessing that superintendent salary and the business manager's salary are not on here because those were suffered through some separate negotiation?
They're negotiated separately.
Are there any others that are subject to sep, to separate negotiation?
All right. Any questions or, you know, discussion? We visit in June, okay? Right, um, then we have amendments to adoption of following policies used, recommended by NISC, you know, um, and is recommended by the Frontier Regional Policy Review Subcommittee, um, these are.
And the CBA thirty-eight policies.
And thank you, Ash. Um, so again, these are not to vote this month, anything, anything, yeah, we talked about earlier, yeah, no, you got it. Okay. Um, so then, reports, um, we, we've got a, uh, we've got our, um, is that this school improvement plan, do we do that under the, you want to do that under the principals report? As opposed to committee, any other committee reports?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Couple more things, um, I, at a recent selectman meeting, this everybody came up with the fact that we'll be having a research for superintendent and there was a definite interest on the part of the selectmen of being involved in the process. Uh, I've not been through a process of, this process, I don't know what's involved, um, I just wanted to bring that up and to, um, I don't know what, you know, other towns obviously are involved, because it's a whole joint thing, but I don't know, um.
I would recommend that we do it next Monday night's meeting and have a discussion there.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's a really valid point and I think that.
I don't know what's been done in the past, I don't know the history, I don't know, I know there have been occasions in the past where, you know, there's been sort of a joint meeting with, you know, the school committee and the selectmen or finance chairs involved to handle, you know, discuss certain matters, I would imagine those usually budgets or something, I don't know what's the background in as far as, I don't know as superintendent. I just know that again, talking to our board, which has been, uh, you know, doing that for a long time and has a lot of institutional knowledge and has, uh,
Generally, when the board.
Concerned, they, they, you know, specifically said, boy, we, you know, we'd like some involvement.
So, when the board meets with the joint committee, it's usually, uh, selectmen and people, uh, kind of nominated to work on the negotiations for the CBAs.
Right.
So, uh, but this is a really great suggestion and I, I would recommend you bring it on Monday night, the, uh, because.
And what do you, what do you think the, uh, you know, what, what are the possible scenarios in terms of, you know, who, and if people are gonna say, well, that's a fine idea and they move on in order, or are there, you got any, any thoughts as to what might transpire?
At this point, they would need a, a, a strong interim and, uh, the last time they did a search, you know, I was, they came and I, you know, twenty-five people at my previous district met for fifteen minutes with them all day long, I mean, they did a real thorough search. Uh, I came to the pedigree, but, uh, it didn't pan out.
Right, but.
So, uh, but if the, uh, I think that they have some ideas themselves, but I think new voices and new ideas are very welcome. And.
If I may. This came up the last time around, because how much parent involvement do we want? And, uh, one perspective that was expressed that seemed to a lot of people said, oh yeah, this makes sense, was that school committee has very few responsibilities. One of them is hiring the superintendent and the other is policies. And we have, uh, we had parents who are also on the school committee, so there was a thought that we should not try to widen it too much. So, that's not to say, the public is always welcome at school committees and the joint stuff, but it may be a, a good partnership thing where they work through the school committee members, uh, and whether or not there would be more direct involvement by the, the town, you know.
The hiring committee, I mean, the, the hiring committee, trying to think what the composition was, I mean, it was a pretty, uh, it did pull from, I mean, there actually was parent representative, there was s, um, staff representatives, uh, I, I thought there was actually select board representation from within, at least within the union, um, you need not every.
What they did was they hired, um, NISC, Massachusetts Association of Student Leagues to lead the search. And what they did was, uh, they did have a committee and there were principals, two principals, two teachers, like, two parents, uh, several school committee people, I have to tell you, I don't remember any selectmen.
Maybe not, I can't, maybe they don't know that, I, yeah, yeah.
It was a large committee and, and so, and then I interviewed once and then, um, they came to my school and visited and they wanted to meet with, uh, let's see, selectmen, they did want to meet with select people, they wanted to meet with, you know, administrators, principals, elementary, middle, high school teacher, IAs, custodian, um, which meant IT director, some, uh, assistant, they met with twenty-five people. Uh, they even met with my next door neighbor, I mean, this is, they had board members, so they met with twenty-five people and, uh, then I got called back as a finalist and then I interviewed for the whole school committee and that was the night that the elevator got stuck and David Sharp was in the elevator and missed my interview, but, uh, so then I was, uh, elected, so, uh, but, um.
I mean, I think that we have the joint committee coming up where I think, you know, we can bring that voice to that in terms of, because there will be, you know, a, 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 a hiring committee for.
Were any of you on the, on the hiring committee last time?
Pardon?
Were any of you on hiring, you were?
Yes.
So, the, the question would be whether they will go with an intern, um, or do a full-out search. An intern would give them time to go back and do a really thorough search, uh, but there, I do, I've heard rumors that they already have a plan, so I don't know. But meanwhile, what we need to do while we're on the subject is, I, um, as you, as you know now, that I am resigning and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity and, uh, so welcome you, being as your community and, uh, I, I want to thank you for that. So, what I do need is a vote to accept my resignation, so.
I'll, yes, I'll move that we accept your resignation, um, with thanks for your service to the town.
I'll second and, uh, before we go, say, uh, thank you for this, for the service. Uh, you've been very supportive of our school, it's much appreciated. Um, I've had, uh, multiple, uh, comments, uh, in a couple of years. I've been here about, uh, the appreciation, uh, this is from, uh, folks in the building and outside the building for how evident it is, uh, your support and care about our school and our community and, uh, you know, being in the building and, uh, that is very noticed and appreciated and, and, um, so, um, thank you and, and wish you the best.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I don't. Just, uh, further on that, um, I think it's, ultimately the school committee has the decision. But I think meeting with the select board, keeping it informed is, I mean, doing our due diligence, I think is an excellent idea. And I'm, I'm still, I mean, eyebrow raised for the whole thing, because at the Frontier meeting, I actually asked, what are we gonna be doing? And I got, which is what I felt like, don't worry about it, we got it taken care of, we'll meet next week and, and we'll tell you what's happening. So, I, I basically, I, I asked what's the process.
Open meeting law, good work, working well here.
So, I, I was given no information on basically what, what the plan going forward was, it was, we sent out a, a doodle, that's what I got. I sent out a doodle to find when people leave and we're gonna take care of that, so I'm, I'm, I am, um, I have a level of concern and, um, I'm very interested to see what's happening at this meeting, make sure some of this.
But it sounds like, I certainly shouldn't get my hopes up that, that, that my suggestion would be actually acceptable, because they've already got a plan.
Well, you know, regardless of whatever plans or agendas people might have in their heads going into the meeting, if we get in there and it's, uh, you know, folks in the, in the room in, in that moment, I mean, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Emotions and decisions.
Yeah.
So, I think, um, be prepared for that.
I also just wanted to say, I have, I've been in touch, contacted with Bob Lesko, uh, you know, a couple of times, went over, met with him once. This is part of dealing with getting our stuff through the capital planning committee and select and so on. He was actually delighted to have someone, he said, someone, Sunderland come over and actually take the time to meet with him, he thought was wonderful. Um, and I sent him a thing after the override passed saying, okay, the funds are approved, I says, it would do a whole lot of good for, in our attempts to advocate for future capital projects at the school, if these get taken care of, you know, now, you know, rather than, you know, who knows when. And so, he took that message in a proper way, like, yeah, okay, it's important for us in terms of, you know, long-term goals of getting things addressed that we, when we do get funding for something, that we take care of promptly. So, I think that's, keep my fingers crossed that's gonna happen. Um, likewise, Scott, who I haven't met, has, you know, gotten a message that we've also approved the money for the security camera stuff and so hopefully he's got the ball as far as getting that done. Um, I got a couple, can I just ask a couple of trivial questions? I got a letter in the mail about marching in the Memorial Day parade as an elected official. You all got the same letter, I assume?
Yeah.
You all marched before?
Yeah.
You plan on marching this year?
Uh, if I am in town, or there's some question whether I'm in town.
Okay.
Um, then, uh, probably.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I just didn't know if, you know, I'm gonna show, if I show up, will I be the only school committee member there or?
I'll, I'll be in a pink baseball softball jersey, marching with, uh, a bunch of other ones.
I've never been to town on that day.
Plan your schedule carefully.
There's the whole, I mean, um, I think it's, it's a great.
It's a fun, it is a fun, I mean, the kids take the bikes.
Been in the parade, yeah.
Um.
You gonna march?
I'll do the T-ball team.
You all got your own allegiances.
Once upon a time, um, um, we, we all, the school committee, um, oh, gosh, I'm, uh, blanking, yeah, it's terrible, I'm so bad with names, our, uh, former principal.
Tim here.
Tim, thank you, gosh, sorry. Um, Tim, uh, um, managed to, uh, to, uh, have a convertible for the day and have the superintendent with him in the convertible and we're, we're like with that, but, um, regardless of whether or not we have a convertible, it's, it's, it's.
So, do you march with a sign that says Sunderland School Committee or do you just?
I think we have, I mean, it's very, generally, pretty low-key, just finding a place to, yeah, deap it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sitting in my truck.
But, yeah, I have, uh, in-laws in town, through that, and there's some chance we're doing excursion with them that weekends up in here. I'd love to, if, if I'm around with them, definitely. I'd love to, if I'm around with them, it's always a good time. So, touch base. Our, Principal report?
Great, and before I get into the report, I also want to publicly thank Lynn for the support that she's given me and the teachers and the students and the community of Sunderland. I've always felt very supported, able to call you at Dimes notice and appreciate all that you've done for us, so, one is here.
Principals' report, you have before you the school improvement plan. This has been an ongoing work in progress throughout the entire year. Goals were actually established pretty early, but then with each meeting, we tweak them a little bit. Members of the school council this year were staff members, Rachel Kitter and Amanda Berg, community members, Cindy Benjamin, school committee rep, Maisie Shaw, and parents, Jessica Corwin and Keely Malone.
The first three goals of the school improvement plan are based off of this district's strategic improvement plan. Those are curriculum and instruction, assessment and data analysis, and special education services. Working towards those goals, this year, we formed an in-house strategic team committee and that's made up of teachers and we've been meeting on a monthly basis to look at the structures and systems we have in place here at Sunderland as a whole and then make recommendations to the staff moving forward. Following goal, the other goals are positive student behavior, school environment, school and community, and going green. Couple of these were also included on the last school improvement plan, but the committee felt that they were very important and liked the progress that we're making with them, so we decided to vote to keep them on as well. The second part of the improvement plan, you'll notice just the bullet items listed under each goal and those are various things that we have been doing, are planning to do, or have completed. And so, that's the plan, any questions?
What's?
Go ahead.
So, with, under the assessment and data analysis, so that new report cards is a, is that a plan to?
We put in new report cards a couple of years ago. And then additionally, we are looking to, we've met with, there's different data tracking systems, ESPED, and we met with ESPED representatives during the last, during the last meeting to, and they showed us an RTI tracking, response to intervention, data tracking system that they have that kind of falls in line with ESPED. But then we've also looked at our current student databases, Power School, and we found that when teachers are entering their grades, entering assessments, we are going to be able to most likely create a link off of those assessments where all the student data that's entered is put into one spreadsheet. So, when we're plugging in specific assignments, we're going to be, going to be able to get real-time live data about where each student is individually academically for a certain concept or skill and then be able to plan groups, academic groups accordingly. So, that's something else we'll. The, the list, the bullets under each goal, it's not all encompassed, all encompassing, so there's other things that are taking place as well.
I have to say, the new report cards, when he speaks to the new report cards, man, I just.
Sure, yeah.
They're not the kind of report cards where it's A, B, C, D, you get a grade for, it's actually a standard-based report card and it talks about mastery or near mastery of the standards that are set by the curriculum framework to the state of Massachusetts. And it tells parents on each, it's identified each strand, whether they're mastering it or they're near mastering it or, so it's not, that's the new report card system.
So, glad to mention some of that stuff because the goal two for me, that strikes me as reporting out to parents, not necessarily teachers using data. So, to hear the assessment practices that you were talking about doesn't fall a little bit more. The one thing that, how long has Power School been used?
This is the first year. This is the first year.
Report cards is the first year.
First year, yeah, so, the only thing that I would, because I use Power School, I really do like it, but in real-time, it's a little bit of a lag because it does take time to assess and then actually data entry. The one thing that's come up and this is more, and I don't know if this is at high school level, but there was very specific contractual language about not reporting this. It used to be, you know, you'd have to report, power reports halfway through and then before it's at the end, it was minimum two to three. And there was some pushback that requiring people to update Power School on a weekly basis or by a break, that's a recording.
And I guess real-time, they've been the wrong phrase, but we are looking to, we will be holding multiple data meetings throughout the year, whether it be quarterly or for trimesters like the report cards are inherently now, and that will help us form groups and form instruction from there.
Is this formally like a multi-tiered system support type approach or?
We're actually meeting on that tomorrow. We had another special education task force separate from the school-based team that met at the district level and we'll be getting a report from them tomorrow on the MTSS, the multi-tiered system supports. So, we'll be moving towards that a little bit as well.
David, intervention.
Intervention.
Any questions?
Does this require action by the school committee?
The school committee, look at the policies.
I think we, it's like once every few years that we.
We need to approve it, I guess.
Yeah, school committee needs to approve it and that the school improvement plan is in place, and this is in the policies here, prior to July first of the, I mean, this year.
I feel like it's been like a once every, near basis or something that we, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's every.
We've been presenting the school improvement plan on an annual basis.
Right, but voting it, and voting it on a annual basis? I don't think, I don't feel like that's right, I feel like we voted it.
Like on a, well, this would be, this would be a new one, because the other one ran through.
Okay, this is, okay, this is, okay. So, I do think we have, actually in the past, voted, you know, in a, in a, I mean, the school council is separate from the school committee, so, but we've, we've just sort of endorsed in a sense that. So, I would say we do that again, since we just got this.
Do that next year.
In June, like, to, to, just to vote, to acknowledge and endorse the school council plan or something.
You want to vote on this in June?
Yes, I think we need, I think we should, yeah.
Have your hands ready for June.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
I do have a question, I think it would fall under goal five, but I think I'm just here to see it. I would be, parking lot meeting today, though, went well.
And I was going to touch on that too, because that was on the important dates.
Did I drop ahead?
So, there was no public comment at the parking lot meeting, just like there was none tonight. The meeting today was myself, Chief Benjamin and Chief DeAntropos, so it was just the three of us. I showed them the PowerPoint presentation that I presented to the selectmen a couple weeks ago. And the, the meeting today was to come up with a set list of things to bring forth back to the selectmen of initiatives that need to happen in the parking lot. So, we are going to recommend adding two crosswalks, that the sidewalk that runs perpendicular to the flagpole, the spaces across the little pull-through area from the, from the flagpole, that area has a sidewalk, but no crosswalks connected, so we're going to look to add crosswalks there. There needs to be crosswalk signs throughout the parking lot. We are going to add a sign for the roundabout that goes in front of the school that says buses only, emergency vehicles only. We are going to recommend repainting some of the lines, we are going to recommend replacing some of the worn signs that have just faded over time or have been damaged by plows. And then, a big part of our discussion centered around the afternoon drop-off or afternoon pickup, excuse me, and the kind of logjam that we have created. Since the last meeting, I've done a little bit more research and found one school that has a specific pickup area for students and cars file into that pickup area, turn off, turn off the car, shut the ignition, and when it's time, all students, all the cars that are not running, go to their parents' vehicles. And then, when the go sign is given, the cars file out. We looked at, we talked about creating two lanes inside the main area of the staff parking lot that would stop right in front of this library area. The cars would pull in, shut off the vehicle. At three oh five, all the students walk out to the cars and then the cones are removed, lane one pulls out and lane two pulls out. That was a suggestion, we're still not sure if we want to go forward with that.
That would park, that would block in all the parking lot.
That are currently parked, yep, it would. And then we would leave the spots that are in the middle, the ones that run in parallel to the flagpole and the ones that run perpendicular to the flagpole, the early childhood families. And any families that have students in preschool and then upper grade, they would be allowed to park there and the all-est student would meet their family in preschool. So, there's still a lot of things to work out. If we were to go this route, we would try to implement it on a monthly basis at the beginning of next school year rather than starting with a little, not too much time in the plan left in this school year. So, it's something to consider, we've looked at all of their options of having the pull-through lane by the flagpole and during the winter months, that doesn't seem as reasonable for a lack of available space for students to stand in that grassy center islands. There's just, there's not an easy answer without creating an additional parking area. We also talked about creating some small area of staff parking out back and that's currently where our lunch personnel and custodians park. And that would be a small slab of pavement that would be put into the grass area they park on now, which would create possibly ten plus, fifteen, sixteen spots that would create more room for families in this area. So, a lot of discussions have been had and I think it's going to be ongoing, but as far as the pickup question, we're still not exactly sure what we want to do with that.
So, one thing that seems to be off the table is stagger finish time?
No, it's not necessarily off the table, but realistically, some research I've done, the staggered times are more than five minutes, they're more than ten minutes, right? So, you can't, we can't say all students in grades K through three are picked up at three o'clock and then all students in four through six are picked up at three oh five and that would be asking parents or whoever's picking them up to leave their house exactly on time, you know, with.
It could happen.
Right, it's not, that's not going to happen. So, if, if we are looking to stagger time, we would probably need it closer, the first group to be picked up closer to three o'clock and the second group to be picked up closer to three fifteen, but if, but then we're talking about contractual hours for staff as well. So, I don't know what that answer, that answer is, yeah.
I remember the selectmen meeting that they commented at some point, you were talking about the need for signage, that the highway superintendent could get involved and.
Yes.
Take care of that, so.
So, I'm going to present the recommendations back to the selectmen and then get in touch with George Emmerich, who's the side highway superintendent. During the meeting this afternoon, we measured the distance from one side of the staff parking lot where the car, where the front of the car faces, you know, out to the soccer field to the other side where it faces the little roundabout area, and that's sixty feet. So, if you have two cars apart and however much space that takes up, fifteen feet or so, fifteen to twenty or feet, then you would have another twenty feet approximately in that middle area for two lanes. And that's during the summer months or the non-snowy months, the parking lot does shrink considerably during the winter. If anyone has a recommendation that would work, please bring it to the, to our attention. So, that's, not being a parking lot, any other questions on that meeting? Fifth grade cafe sun tomorrow, our kindergarten is also going to the Durfee Conservatory at UMass this Friday, we have our staff appreciation breakfast and lunch sponsored by our PTO. Earlier in the year, I talked about a couple of different residencies that were taking place. Second residency is the Dexter and the Dinosaurs and that's being put on by a local theater company with our third grade. On May twenty-second, we have our dining out for the PTO, Bubbs Barbecue, and that's on the twenty-second, twenty-third PTO meeting. Our community service day is Friday, May twenty-fifth, Sunderland in Action Day. Most of our projects this year are taking place on campus, however, we do have our second grade students heading over to the town library to perform some projects both inside the library and on the grounds. Our fifth grade students are heading over to the Newmanland Health Center, the nursing home across the street, to do a few projects there as well. In addition to those, our sixth graders usually do the walking loop that takes us down the access road, past Millstone and picks up trash along, along that route. And then there's a bunch of other things that are taking place on campus as well. The sixth grade dance is that evening. The SES spring concert is May twenty-ninth and that features our fifth and sixth grade chorus and our strings and band programs. Our grades five and six are going to Boston, we have our walking, our spring walk and roll to school day. And each year, we seem to have more and more families and both students and parents walk or roll to school. PTO is sponsoring the Tangwood Marionettes, we had them a few years ago for one performance and they're coming back to perform Cinderella on May thirty-first. Kindergarten visitation day, field trips, our junior Olympics, sixth grade step-up day is June fifth, sixth grade graduation is Tuesday evening on June twelfth, starting at six thirty. In regards to the school's three-hundredth performance for the town's three-hundredth celebration, we have been working very hard as a staff and student body to prepare for that performance. It's going to feature an ongoing narrative of a grandmother and her two grandchildren and she's going to be giving them a, kind of a history of the town of Sunderland, there's going to be skits mixed into that, that ongoing timeline as well as grade-level student songs. So, we've been practicing those skits and that's, spring carnival is on June twentieth and field day is on the twenty-first.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else to report today? Entertain emotion to adjourn with a good healthy, healthy buffer before kickoff, I mean, whatever else people might be doing this evening. So, like, I mean, all in favor?
Aye, aye.